Okay, we're off and running. Welcome, everyone. Opening the meeting now. Let's see, kind of a long agenda here, so let's get moving. First is Resolution thirteen dash two oh nineteen, rejecting bids for building, or rebuilding of a stone wall on Main Street. Up on Main Street, the bids came in way higher than we had hoped for, ranging from, I think, one hundred and twenty-seven to four hundred and forty thousand to repair like a hundred and thirty feet of a wall. So what we're gonna try to do is, well, what we will do is reject the bids tonight, hopefully, and then put it up for bid again. We did this for the roofs on, on the firehouse, and they came in back much lower, so we'll hope that that happens again. Anyway, so I'll make a motion to approve or pass Resolution thirteen two thousand nineteen, rejecting bids of a stone wall.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, sorry, roll call.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Bellotto?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Is that a bell?
Yes. Quit now.
Request the purchase property of ninety-two Main Street. Is that you, Craig? I'd like to investigate purchasing of the front patio of ninety-two Main. Can you please take whatever steps are necessary, whatever steps are needed to begin that discussion? We're willing to sell. It's a set number. Well, I shouldn't say that. I'll ask the board if they are. But there's a set fee. Did you talk to Jeff about?
He sent me here.
No, okay.
Is it six dollars or four?
It's six or four. It's six or four dollars square foot, and you have to pay all of the attorney's fees for both yourself and for...
Closing costs.
Closing costs. Which I think are, at the max, two thousand, I think, from what I understand.
Require a survey, or just a meets and bounds description?
Needs meets and bounds.
Meets and bounds.
Yeah.
Okay. About two thousand dollars, plus the four or six dollars a square foot.
I think that's for the attorney. And I don't know, whatever the square footage is, times six or four, I can't remember what it is.
You should see Jeff.
He's having here. That's what I did.
We're in favor of selling it.
Okay, that's what he needs to know, I guess, and then he'll guide me in the process.
Yeah, then you have to, yeah, just get what you need, the meets and bounds, and then work the rest out with Jeff, and then come back with us, to us, and pass it.
Thank you.
Okay? You did a lot to your...
It was easy.
On your bid, never.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
Good coffee.
Oh, you gave out coffee.
Update of the Phillips Town Climate Smart Initiative. The clean cutness of the...
Ah, yes, sorry, I finally got tired of the other look.
It's easier taking a shower.
And the use less shampoo.
Are you gonna get a perm or no?
Get a perm?
Yeah.
Maybe. I've never done it before.
No, neither.
Does it take long?
This is like natural.
So, just wanted to do a check-in, let you know what we're up to at the town of Phillips Town in terms of our Climate Smart Communities Program, which has been in operation since January 2018. So our progress is, we, back in January of 2018, formed an active community task force and internal green team. On the task force, we have about twenty volunteer members, which wonderfully have consistently been attending. Some meetings, we have around ten, sometimes we have more than twenty, but it's been a great continuous effort in terms of community involvement, which has helped a lot. And our internal green team consists of different staff members within the government, and we meet probably three times a year to discuss issues related to government operations. We completed a government operations greenhouse gas emissions inventory, and so the next step with that is we'll use that information, that data, to put together a plan in terms of how we reduce our emissions and how we will implement different actions to bring those emissions down. Most of our missions are related to the guest buildings and vehicles, at least for the town of Phillips Town, because we don't have a wastewater treatment plant, we don't have streetlights. So it's pretty straightforward, but vehicles, unfortunately, there aren't too many available options in terms of hybrid or electric for the heavy-duty trucks for the highway department. So right now, we're doing a fuel emissions inventory for the fleet to at least have a good idea of everything that's in stock, and then as things come on the market in terms of trucks that can replace what we have, the idea is to phase them out accordingly. And then in terms of buildings, we're doing energy audits, which is one of the items on here. So we received four different bids and are now looking forward to doing audits for five of our nine buildings. Two of the buildings are already in the process of renovation, the town hall and the highway garage, so we're kind of passing on those since they're already in process. And then there's a trailer at the highway garage, which is a rental, and the Garrison Landing Water District, which is seven feet, or seven feet, so not much need to audit that.
Be a long audit.
But our biggest producer of greenhouse gas emissions is the recreation center. It is a twenty thousand square foot building with poor insulation and a very old heating system. The boilers have been updated, but in terms of movement and so on and so forth, it needs updates. So we're looking into a net zero renovation, long-term, to convert that building to be a net zero emissions building.
You're doing solar there, aren't you?
They're looking into it, but so far haven't, you know, confirmed it. And that would tie into doing a net zero project.
And that, do you know if part of it is the use of the building?
Yeah. So we're doing an ashtray level two, yeah, incorporates all the mechanicals, the building envelope, including the windows and doors, but also, yeah, in terms of habits, heating...
Seems like a lot of that, from what I remember, was, was still bathrooms from when it was part of the Brothers of the Dead, I believe.
Oh, yeah. In terms of, like, it might be a space that's not being properly utilized.
Yeah, it's not...
Exactly. Yeah, so that's also, what are simple things that we can do that don't necessarily cost money to make the building more efficient? And it might mean trying to bring in more programs or combine office space, so on and so forth. We shall see. The audit will give us a lot of good information to make the right decisions based on that. We also created an active website, climate-smartphillipstown.org, and a monthly newsletter that we send out to people who've signed up for it. And this contains information on different events that are going on, the work that we're doing on our task force. We created a, item six, a website energy efficiency page with resources for home and business owners, with a lot of support from the Cornell Cooperative Extensions Community Energy Advisors Program, which is active right now, and they're really great. They have a free program to basically guide any home or business owner through, how can I make my building more efficient? And they'll follow you through the whole process. And they're funded by NYSERTA. We received fifteen thousand in New York State grants for various Climate Smart Communities certification actions, which are outlined below in the next steps. We're also working with the three schools supporting what are called National Wildlife Federation Eco Schools programs, and the idea is to empower students, administrators, teachers, and maintenance staff, and parents in each of the schools in doing something similar to an energy audit, but looking at all of the activities that happen in the school, the learning environment, the use of energy, water use, so on and so forth. And this program's great because that's different pathways. So there's a lot of energy in terms of that, because we can get kids involved. And the last thing is, we completed an electric vehicle charging station survey. We'll release the results on June sixth at the town board meeting, and that was essentially to get community input on preferred locations for EV charging stations in the future.
On the, on the charging station, what's entailed in that, if you wanted to do one of, if the village wanted to have one installed? How does that hook up work with their, how does that coordinate with what do you need? You know, who do you coordinate that with? With Central Hudson, or whoever your supplier is, and who pays for that, or...
Sure. So the New York State DEC has a program right now that pays for eighty percent of the cost of an electric vehicle charging station. You don't have to be a Climate Smart Communities to get it. You have a better chance of getting those grants if you are not certified, but a pledged Climate Smart Community. And then it's a matter of, you have to have an electrical contractor, and also, yeah, Central Hudson has to be involved in terms of tying it in. Most likely, there needs to be a new meter. Sometimes you can tie it into an existing, but generally, it requires a separate meter. And there are different levels of charging stations, but what we're looking at and what you can get grants for is called the Level Two. It runs around two forty volts, and usually charges an electric vehicle in the span of three to six hours, depending on the type of car and how big the battery is. There are ones that are faster, but they require three-phase wiring, and it's much more costly. And generally, the state isn't supporting that, except at rest stops on highways, because they can charge cars in like half an hour.
For the funding that you mentioned, is that to construct the station or to the electricity?
No, just for installation. So the cost of electricity, we decided at the town, you can have, basically pay, it's just like a parking meter. Looks almost exactly like a parking meter. And it has capacity for two cars to charge at the same time.
And you know the cost?
It depends on the electricity rates.
No, for the installation?
Oh, the cost for the installation is usually around ten thousand. That's the average in the Hudson Valley. So you're looking at eight thousand grant from the state, and then two thousand, which can be made in in-kind donations if electricians, you know, is able to do it for a little cheaper or something like that. There are ways to reduce the cost. And the state's throwing all this money at it because they want to support municipalities and doing their work.
Okay.
So our next step's what we're working on. We're going to present our community and government operations inventory results at a, basically a community summit in the fall. And the idea with that is to show the whole community in Phillips Town the results of all the data collection and surveys that we've done in terms of measuring emissions from different sectors within Phillips Town's borders. And then we will develop a climate action plan in terms of, okay, how do we reduce our emissions, both for government operations and for the community inventory? We're also looking to update our natural resource inventory and perform a vulnerability assessment, which essentially revolves around prioritizing the value of different natural resources or infrastructure in the community, and prioritizing funding and implementation projects based on their vulnerability, their value in terms of transportation, emergency routes, so on and so forth. And thereafter, we'll develop a climate smart resiliency plan using the information from the natural resource inventory and the vulnerability assessment. In addition, we got money, so all of these actions described in the next steps are supported by the two grants that we got from New York State. We will develop a heat emergency plan in terms of formalizing the process of when there are major heat waves, and especially if people lose electricity and don't have access to air conditioning. How do we make sure, for example, the rec center, which is a designated cooling center right now, actually will perform and make sure that people can stay cool? Because right now, it doesn't actually have installed air conditioning. It just has window units for the offices. So even though it's designated as the center for people to go to, it's not actually set up to handle that capacity. And also, develop community flood prevention strategies, most of which is raising awareness about changes in flood zones. There is an insurance program from the national government. The more people that participate in it, the more education, and eventually, that feeds into the building department as well, in terms of, do we approve projects that are in these zones, or are there requirements in terms of how high the first floor has to be to mitigate the damage that could happen from flooding events? We will complete a comprehensive plan update, including sustainability elements, and this is kind of tagging on to what has already been going on. There's a comprehensive plan update committee that's been working for a couple of years, and I believe just got a grant to hire a consultant to formally write up the comprehensive plan. So we've been working with them for the past couple, actually, no, more than that, probably seven months, in terms of giving suggestions on sustainability elements and also possible ways to measure the effectiveness of those strategies. And then, one of the strategies within the comprehensive plan, but also for which we got some money from the state, is to support bicycling and walking paths in the community. And this is partnering with the Phillips Town Community Congress Committee on Biking and Walking Paths, which also got a grant from the, I think, National Park Service to do an assessment of all the trails and paths in Phillips Town to see the possibility of doing this kind of work. And that's where we are at. And there's a lot going on. But a lot of good stuff, and especially because of all the volunteers. This would not happen without all of them.
When you were here, I can't remember how long ago it was...
Probably last spring.
To propose that the village become a climate smart...
Oh, yeah, way back when, fall twenty seventeen, I think.
At that time, we declined. Can we reopen that?
Oh, yeah, of course.
I would like...
Definitely.
I would like my colleagues to more seriously consider that.
Sure.
I think it would put us in a very good position for grants from the state and potentially the federal government. So what should be our next step if we wanted to do that?
I can email Jeff the resolution. They have a template, which just outlines, this is what you commit to as pledging to be a climate smart community. What's great is it's, I don't know how to phrase it, it's non-binding in the sense that you have as long as you want to work on it. So City of Beacon made the pledge back in twenty eleven, and they've been doing lots of different things in terms of sustainability, but they weren't actually pursuing climate smart certification. So they are just now hiring a coordinator to actually kind of document everything, submit it to the state, get their points, and earn certification. But they took a long time, and it worked for them in that process. They were still getting things done in the meantime.
Can we piggyback on the work that you've done in Phillips Town?
Sure. So definitely, our community emissions inventory, we can literally just give you the data, and based on per capita, you can just reduce the numbers down to Cold Spring, and that will save you a lot of money. And then, a lot of the work overlaps as well in terms of the studies, natural resource inventory, vulnerability assessment. So it makes sense for us and Village of Nelsonville, and all three of us, to work together as much as possible.
We do have a natural resources inventory.
For Cold Spring.
Yes, that was part of the LWRS, which is the next step from the comprehensive plan.
What does that stand for?
Pardon me?
LWRS.
Local Waterfront Revitalization Strategy.
Oh, okay.
If you say a comprehensive plan to an LWRS, and then an LWRP. So we completed the LWRS, and in there are natural resources, more precisely, it's more flora and fauna, soil, things of that nature. It's all spelled out.
Is that through the Hudson River Restuary Grant Program? They have something?
No, that was done, I believe that the work was primarily done in, under the auspices of, and I can't remember what organization funded the comprehensive plan and then the LWRS. I don't think it was NYSERTA. It may have been Greenway.
Do you know when that was completed?
The LWRS was completed in two thousand and eleven.
Okay.
I doubt very much that soil, flora, and fauna will change.
Right, right, too much. Yeah. So, yeah, that might end up saving some work as well, at least for within the village, if you're doing that stuff.
And can you send that, the information for the charge station also?
Sure. Yeah, they have a great little flyer that summarizes everything, and it also has the links in terms of how to access it. Yep. Great. And it's also easy for us to collaborate if, like, the town has a better chance of getting the grant, because we're a certified climate smart community, but the village wants to install the charging stations, we can partner up in terms of doing the application. And I think it's just a matter of writing a mitigation easement in terms of clarifying it's village property, but, you know, the town quote-unquote has access to it, or whatever works. Or it might be easier for you to do it directly, which is great also, especially because a lot of the suggestions from the survey have been doing something within the village.
Do you know what they have, the three phases that you said it's a lot more? Do you know what, how much more it is?
It really depends on the location, but, yeah, I was told it can cost between thirty and fifty thousand dollars versus the town.
Substantially.
Yeah, it's substantial. And often, it's underutilized because of such a fast charge. There's actually an issue in terms of, it's called DC fast charge. It can run up to four eighty volts, and some of the batteries on electric vehicles actually get burnt out if they charge too often on the DC fast charge. So the industry itself is trying to figure out how to get the batteries to work better, but they haven't sorted it out yet. So that's why the state isn't really trying to promote that. So, charging for three hours and hopefully supporting a business in the village is kind of the stage that we're at at this point.
But do people usually, I'm not familiar at all, so, I mean, people don't necessarily have to be there for a full charge, they can...
Oh, yeah, yeah, and it's all through smartphones at this point, so you'll get, they have an app, and you'll get a notice when your car is fully charged, and then you can go back and move it.
Yeah, so you can move it at any, what I'm saying is, is you're not, you don't have to be there for like three hours.
No, 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 no.
But you can be charging your battery.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, the energy audits you were doing out at Phillips Town Rec, is that something that was part of a, did you get money for that, or is that just something you're doing?
Yeah, there's something called Flex Tech, Flexible Technical Assistance Program, which is through NYSERTA. And they have funding for municipalities and for businesses. They'll pay up to fifty percent of the cost of an energy audit. And then, our responsibility was to go out and collect bids. We got bids from four different companies and have found a company that we like. So now the process is putting the agreement together, waiting to make sure that we're actually getting the match from NYSERTA, and then thereafter, going through and performing the audits.
Got your people.
Got our people, hopefully.
What does something like that cost?
Ninety-four hundred for our five buildings. It's large because the rec center is twenty thousand square feet, and with fifty percent of that covered by the state, it's around forty-seven hundred, we're looking at. And that's for five buildings. The Continental Village Clubhouse, the rec center, the building department, or town annex, Depot Theater, which might be covered more because it's actually a rental, it's owned by the Garrison Landing Association, so it's possible for that to be fully covered for the audit. And then the last one is the Aqueduct Road Water, or Pump House over in Continental Village. And the other buildings we didn't include are either already being renovated, and so the architectural drawings are done, or they're too small to bother with. Thanks. You're welcome.
Okay, next, discussion on hiring officers for the Cold Spring Police Department. We have a request from Officer in Charge Larry Burke. At the present time, Cold Spring Police Department is staffed with thirteen part-time police officers and one officer in charge. These thirteen officers cover the ninety, ninety-three shifts per month, and are also expected to cover other shifts, such as, but not limited to court officer, parade details, and commercial movie events, to name a few. As the officer in charge, one of the most difficult tasks to complete is that of scheduling. With only thirteen officers and a contractual agreement of providing seven tours of duty per month of availability, plus the limitations of hours, work set by law, scheduling continues to be a challenge. I feel that the hire of new police officers will help ease the task of scheduling. I have set the village board to approve the hiring of Reese Aronau and Mark Morrow. I am confident that both of these officers will be an asset to the police department as well as the community. Should the board have any questions or concerns, please feel free to contact me. We did interview, the board interviewed, along with Officer in Charge Burke, both Reese and Mark. So, any other questions or anything on this before we... So I'll move to, to approve the hiring of both Reese Aronau and Mark Morrow on the recommendation of Officer in Charge Burke.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, authorize mayor to sign agreement with Munistat. Someone familiar with that more than I am, other than their bond counselor?
Yep. They've been doing that work for us for a while.
Okay, anything on that?
No, I think they've been doing a good job.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion that the, authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Munistat.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're gonna be thinking... Okay, request for Clearwater waived docking fees. We do this, I think every year, there's the dates and everything else. I don't have the first page on that. Do I?
It's in the back of...
I have a few upside down with that.
So they, they had been, we had renewed their application about, it was in April, but the application was on the wrong form, not the correct form. So what they're asking now is whether or not the village will waive the fees, which we have done in the past.
Sandy, Sandy, it was going to be that, Saunders came in the office the other day, all upset with Jeff, because, not with Jeff, but seemingly Clearwater was thinking they were gonna have to pay these fees, and that we should, we should waive it. It's like we always waive their fees, so I guess, I guess somewhere along the line, the information got crossed.
They always waive the fees.
Yes.
Yeah. We waive the fees because it's an educational, not-for-profit, so I'll make a motion to waive the fees for the scheduled Clearwater docking.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Continuing with water, we have discussion fees for use of dockside by Hudson River Expeditions. Ryan's here, so if you'd like to give us a little more information, I think people are fairly familiar, but you can refresh our memory.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Last year, we were here discussing the same thing, actually, and we had approved use of dockside for an overnight kayak event. And so we're back here again now with the new organization of the park and the structure there with the fees and whatnot. So I, assuming that some of you recall what the event is, but I'll just briefly try to sum it up. We're working at the behest of the New York State Greenway to deliver a five-day kayaking trip from this year's Poughkeepsie to New York City. And so through that, our charge by Greenway is to have the participants experience the trip of the Hudson River, but also to bring awareness to the Hudson River Water Trail and to the sport in general. Along the way, we camp at various locations down, down the river. So being, this is our hometown, we would like to stay here for more than one night, actually, probably two, if not three, if possible. And with the new pricing structure, I was, I would be unable to do it here. So I wanted to discuss what the expectation of fees would be for the use of dockside park, also with that in consideration of a local business working for the behest of Greenway, and the scale of the event, which is twenty to forty people, not hundreds or thousands of people. So, and it didn't really find anything in the guidelines for dockside that had any consideration of scope or scale and the nature of the event.
Can you, you, can you give us like a start to finish? You're coming in with twenty to forty people with tents plus ten, tenths of staff plus...
It would be max of thirty participants, and ten staff would be max.
So everybody has a tent, so we're talking about forty tents.
Essentially, yeah. Because some people double up, but, yeah.
And a food truck. And they're coming in on a weekday?
We're looking at Monday, the eighth...
Eighth of...
June, sorry.
Okay. What month? June, June?
I'm sorry, July. July, Monday, the eighth, July.
And you would stay here all day Monday, Monday night, all day, I mean, the tents will be set up, you wouldn't be here, but the tents will be set up all day Tuesday, Tuesday night, and Wednesday, and you're talking three nights, Wednesday night?
Yeah, so potentially three nights, at the most.
So you'd get access to...
Two, Monday night, Tuesday, a minimum, potentially Wednesday night as well.
Tuesday, Wednesday, so you have locked up a space in Dockside for four days, three nights and four days, pretty much.
Well, be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, but, yeah.
Three nights.
Wednesday morning, we're gone.
So that's two nights.
Yes.
Monday, Tuesday.
So it's just two nights?
Two nights, Monday night, Tuesday night, and leaving Wednesday?
Yes. We can do that.
Okay, no, I meant, I'm just...
I haven't decided on, so there's one that last night is filled up in the air.
It could be three nights.
It could.
Okay.
And how many vehicles would be going in and out? Because you're, the first day, from what I understand, we had previous conversations. The first day, you bring in all the kayaks and equipment, and drop everything off, so how many vehicles are we talking that go in? Because then, the next day, everyone leaves and heads to Poughkeepsie, right? Because then, the next day, everyone leaves and heads to Poughkeepsie, right? And then you come back.
Yeah, so I mean, it would be four vehicles, I'd say, in and out.
When you're charging, you're charging per person or per tent, or how does this work?
Person, participant, yeah.
Roughly, how much are you charging?
That hasn't been determined, but it's over a thousand per person at least.
Okay, so it's not really, I mean, you're talking about working with the Greenway, but it's not really a not-for-profit.
No, it's not a not-for-profit, but it's, we're working under contract, and they've hired us as an outsper to deliver the event.
So they've hired you?
Well, they've contracted us. It's kind of a weird situation if they did, they provided some funding to build the infrastructure for us to deliver the event.
So you're talking over a thousand per person, so roughly thirty to forty thousand dollars. Plus whatever you got from Greenway.
Well, it's not plus anything, that's.
So you have four vehicles? If there are forty people, each vehicle is gonna carry ten kayaks or two nines?
The trailers carry up to sixteen.
Sixteen, okay.
But that's, we also have our shop and our other launch point, Dockside, our founder Dock Park. We have other options there as well.
So you drop the vessels off at Dockside on Monday? And then they launch from Dockside?
They would launch on Monday, yes, and then paddle locally on Monday. The design is that Monday would be local paddling and sort of an orientation day. And then Tuesday would be Poughkeepsie full spring leg of the trip.
And this is rain or shine?
Oh, yeah. We got a lot of rain last year.
And you have a food truck as well?
We do, yeah. So it's actually technically a trailer, but, yes. It's a commercial kitchen trailer, yes.
Is there cooking at the truck, or is it just like box lunches or?
Oh, no, it's a fully outfitted commercial kitchen that's Health Department approved, fully set up.
So you've seen the Dockside Agreement, which identifies what kind of certificates, such as from the Board of Health, that would be required.
Yeah, we have four approvals and everything in line already.
So, did you do the math, given the Dockside Agreement, as to what the village would normally be asking for the three days?
Well, it's unclear. I mean, it says eight hours for twelve hundred dollars.
I roughly calculated a fifty-five hundred dollars.
Okay.
That's twelve, that's doing four eight-hour blocks at twelve hundred, which is forty-eight. And then, two hundred and fifty dollars an hour for Wednesday, if it was four hours, something like that.
Okay. But you were calculating based on two nights?
Two nights, yeah.
So we need to sort of crunch some numbers again.
You'll be bringing your own portable toilets and your own portable water?
Yes, and we need to take care of that. So just in some perspective, like, we're utilizing another location that's part of the Palisades Interstate Park Commission. And at that location, we have a full, I think it's about five thousand square foot pavilion. That's two floors with full bathrooms. And it's two hundred and fifty dollars for a day. So, that's why I'm like, and many of our locations that we've utilized have been minimal to none.
I guess that's what things, into perspective from our side, is that we just took over the park. We have no financial assistance at all, doing anything for improving. We do all the maintenance on the park. We wanna, you know, eventually improve. We have a ten-year contract and then a possible ten-year future contract on top of that. So, you know, the reason why we came up for this is because all the money that we're, that we're trying to, you know, that we charge people is going directly back to our rec department so that we can make the improvements. And without money coming in, or if we're charging people two hundred and fifty dollars or something, you know, I don't know how they built their pavilion, but we don't have the money to even build a pavilion. So, basically, the improvements on the park are gonna come from fees that we get from down there. And so, you know, people, you know, have all kinds of great ideas, and I do too, and I'm sure all of the board members here do. But in order to do that, we need some.
Capital.
Capital, some revenue coming in. So, you know, I mean, this is kind of more of a unique situation. We didn't anticipate like a smaller number for that many days, but, you know, you know, basically, you know, we're not gonna.
I'm not asking, yeah, no, I'm not expecting zero. But, you know, within scale and perspective, I think. And then considerations of, you know, local business as well, if that's of any.
When we pulled together the Dockside Agreement, we did look at all the New York State Parks, you know, fees for any kinds of events that we could find, that we thought would sort of fit into what we were doing here. And that's how we came up with our numbers, we just didn't pull them out of the air. And they're just not, you know, numbers because we felt like making a lot of money. We went, I went through, you know, hundreds of pages of New York State Parks fees and schedules and so on and so forth, to see what they charge in terms of various events and trying to pull together what we have. And not every event is gonna fit what we came up with for a fee schedule.
Camping wasn't really.
And it was also, if it was for ticketed events, that's what these number, that the fees that we're charging and the fee schedule are different from not-for-profits or, you know, versus, you know, someone that's, you know, profiting. Like the Marzolos are having their Ascend Fest there, then, you know, it's a ticketed event, it's for profit, you know, it's a business, so, you know, so there is a difference there. And we did, we took so long on working on this, on working on this document.
Well, it seems to me that this is a for-profit event. One could consider it to be ticketed in that you accept reservations for up to forty people. But I think we should consider potentially, I think we should consider a lower price.
No, I agree.
Particularly since it's a weekday. I don't think we have that many requests thus far for use during the week. So, let me start the bidding. If we've got five thousand dollars, the estimate, I would say fifty percent off the top. So I would say we start at twenty-five hundred and negotiate from there, whether it be up or down.
Yeah, I would, I would go with twenty-five hundred, which is a number I think I threw out if it like, would, and Dave came up with the fifty-five hundred based on the two nights.
Fifty-five.
Two and a half days, two nights, so, I mean, between twenty-five and three thousand, I think is, is fair.
Yep, okay.
For the fact that like, we've got a big chunk of Dockside not able for anybody else to use for three or four days.
Also, you know, we were approving, we will be approving, you know, they set the date because of the Ascend, which is also during the week. And they're paying the eight hours at twelve hundred dollars, so.
Do they, we have to look at each one?
Right, yeah, no, I agree, I just want, you know, I want you to be aware of that.
I'd like to know a little bit more about the scope of the event. Is it, you mentioned the other organization that is?
Greenway.
Greenway. Greenway? And they, tell me about them a little bit.
So, New York State Greenway is an agency of New York State, like an alimony in the capital. And they administer the Hudson River Water Trail System. And as well as the, they're working now, I think, on a trail system from New York City to go to Canada, is what their goal is. But I'd have to check their mission statement to tell you exactly what they are. But they're primarily an organization or an agency of the state that promotes outdoor access.
I see.
Some wealthy people.
The village, the village, the village, the Greenway.
Well, it's a state agency, I mean, it's not.
No, I'm not saying that, I mean, I know.
I can help a little bit, because I'm on the communities council of the Hudson River Valley Greenway. But basically, the Hudson River Valley is a national heritage area. And so, the Greenway was created in the state to facilitate funding of this national heritage area. So, there's Greenway funding all over the place, a lot of grants, we just, Roberto just mentioned a grant that went to Phillips Town for the comp plan update. They do a lot of that sort of funding, funding of municipalities, but a lot of it's about enhancing the Hudson River Valley area. The recreational opportunities and the facilitating funding of the municipalities for protecting and preserving Hudson River Valley area.
The village received a Greenway grant for developing, initially developing the comprehensive plan in the LWRS. We currently have a grant from Greenway to complete the LWRP. So they've been very generous to the village for, let me call it, land use planning in the Hudson River Valley.
But the Greenway is funded by, through New York State.
Yeah, through the state, yeah, that's right.
Thank them for sending us some of our money.
So you're working with Greenway, but you're not kicking anything back to Greenway? Are you paying them to, and they're not paying you anything to do this?
They're not, no longer. So the history of the event was that the Greenway themselves organized the Great Hudson River Paddle from the late nineties to the mid two thousands. And you see some photographer, or some photos of it over at Little Stony Point, at the kiosk out at the point. They're all photographs of this event at Dockside, staying at Dockside. So Dockside's a historical overnight location for the event. They organized it and ran it for years, subsidizing the event themselves with participants paying some fees as well. And largely, participants were self-supported through the event. The event continued for about ten years, but it waned and it ceased somewhere around two thousand four or five. So last year, they requested that we rejuvenate the event as we have. So, they provided us with some funding to build the infrastructure for our, so basically, they funded money for our tents and our kitchen. But, that's it. Once that, once that money was spent on the infrastructure, that was the end of it, so. Then it was up to us to deliver the event as a participant fee-based event.
So, I propose twenty-five hundred for the two or three-day event.
I would propose twenty-five hundred for two nights and three thousand for three nights?
I think twenty-five is good.
Twenty-five?
Yeah.
Well, what did you pay last year, do you remember?
They didn't do a pay-to-pay.
We waived it completely. Oh, you didn't run it, that's right.
We didn't run it, but I think it was like two hundred and fifty dollars for nine, was the fee.
Right, but I thought we were, we were already considering the amount then, or were we not?
Yeah, but at the time, it wasn't finalized, and we had agreed on the mayor's part of the schedule, fee schedule at the time. Okay, mayor's part. Now you're supplying all the, my concerns are the restrooms, how you're gonna be cooking, how the food's gonna be supplied and delivered, and where the garbage is gonna go when you're done. Because three days of however many people generates a lot of garbage, and a lot of human waste as well. So, those are my concerns. I think, I mean, I think that twenty-five hundred is too much for what you're doing there.
Absolutely.
And I think it's a camping situation. This isn't a wedding or a, you know, or some type of function that, you know, that it's a ticketed event in the true sense of the, you know, ticketed event type impact as well. Because people are just gonna be staying, right?
Correct, yeah, we'll be gone all day. You know, basically from eight AM until four PM, coming back exhausted from, you know, seventeen miles on the river each day.
I'm inclined to agree with Steve on that, in that it seems like a relatively low impact.
And we're not, I mean, certainly, so also, the part of the event is driven, or is designed that it's not in any way excluding use of the park. We're actually going to encourage people to come and sit with us, talk to us, ask us what we're doing. Learn about the event, learn about the river, learn about what's going on, and the opportunities that the river is for adventure and outlaw, and things like that.
That's what, kind of where I was going with this, in that, you know, for a long time, I think most residents of Cold Spring realize that we benefit from a greater connection to the river as a river town. Even, or as a river village, so. But, I don't know, I think anything that kind of encourages environmental protection, or keeping that foremost in our residents' mind, anything that we can do to do that and encourage that and promote that. And environmental awareness, I think is a good idea, and that we should do.
The other thing I would say, is if we had a wedding there, they would pay twelve hundred dollars for an eight-hour day, and they would be there and gone. They're gonna be there continually and entirely, and granted, you're gonna invite people to come talk to you, but your tents are gonna be there for three to four days. And nobody's gonna, it should be to the point where nobody should be walking around where your tents are, and I hope you have insurance or understand that we're not responsible for that. But the whole area of the park is pretty much yours for three days, say, three days. And so, it's a difference between, you know, somebody having a wedding where they're there for maybe eight hours, they come, they go, they clean up, and they're done. And if they're there for eight hours, it's twelve hundred, if they have to set up and clean up, it's an additional day before, day after, and so on and so forth. And you are gonna be there continually for two and a half, three days, three and a half, four days, something like that, which to me is a much longer stretch. So I think three thousand is not at all, or twenty-five hundred is not too much for the fact that you're gonna be, you know, monopolizing that whole part of the park.
I look at it as a business. You're running a business, you're profiting from this business, whether it's from New York State or from Greenway or whoever it is. And, you know, it's the price of doing business, as far as I'm concerned. I think, you know, I can say the same with the Ascend event. I mean, I think that's great, and I think people coming down there and being spiritual is something we should encourage also. So we should not charge them also, but they're making a profit, their business is that, their livelihood is that, just as this is yours. So, that's where, you know, if this was like, you know, bringing kids from like urban areas up and doing kayak tours and having them have that whole experience, that puts a different twist on it for me. I mean, but if it's for people that can afford to spend that much time and pay that much money, you know, you know, that's great. I mean, I'm not holding anything against them, but this is a for-profit, you know, event. And that's where, you know, I find it different than, you know.
And typically, I mean, you said you haven't really set the price yet, so if we told you twenty-five hundred, you would probably jack up the price to make up the difference. Fifty dollars, and if they're gonna pay a thousand dollars.
Is twenty-five hundred dollars something that is manageable for this event for you?
Absolutely not. It won't compare to that.
So what is manageable? Two hundred and fifty dollars.
Come on.
Yeah, it is manageable.
I'm sure it is.
But, I mean, I couldn't see more than a thousand for that thing, but, you know, I really, but that's.
Should we discuss it?
Well, we can vote on, I mean, if all was in favor of waiving all the fees and allowing, you know, approving this application for a thousand dollars, say aye. All those against?
Against.
For a thousand, yes.
I mean, this isn't, like, this isn't the Clearwater.
Okay.
So where are we going?
Well, we're not gonna do it for a thousand, so.
I mean, we can give them a price, and if he doesn't want it, he has to go elsewhere, unfortunately.
Well, make a motion for twenty-five hundred?
I'll make a motion to lock it in at twenty-five hundred.
Second?
And it's up to you whether or not you wanna accept it.
That's fair, thank you.
Oh, in favor of twenty-five hundred?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. No.
And Steve voted no. Lynn, were you yes or no?
I was a, I was a yes for twenty-five hundred.
Okay. Okay, so if you decide to do it, let us know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Next, a request to film Mayor's Park from Columbia University students, request waived or reduced fees. I didn't read this.
They've filled out the form, and they're asking if we would reduce the cost of three hundred and fifty dollars the first day and a hundred dollars subsequent days.
What are they asking for?
Mayor's Park, they've got three shoots that they wanna do. If you look at the second page of their application, there's going to be a shoot at the baseball field, boy talks with coach while walking along fence, some players practice. Then unnamed road, Market Street, offshoot. then unnamed road, Market Street, offshoot near Cold Spring train station, boy walks along road alone, and then the last one is Marshland, Wester River Road, Fair Street. Boy enjoys Christine Landscap scenery, which is not how we would describe the Marshal River Road, but that's okay. So there are three scenes.
It's also a pre-size of only five to eight people, so.
If they're going down, I'm sorry, but I don't get, is in the marsh outside of the village?
I think what they're doing is the marsh, when he says along River Road, Fair Street, that would be just north of Mayor's Park.
Right, is the village, isn't the village lying at Mayor's Park, at the end of Mayor's Park?
Um, no, I, I, I think it's a little bit further. So it says northwest of Mayor's Park. You're probably right, friend, that that is not within the village. Or it could be outside of the village, north of the village. But it seems to me what they're asking for the, for the film is a reasonable request.
Yeah, I don't remember what we had scheduled. Lynn, do you remember what we had set for filming?
I wish I could remember it off the top of my head.
I don't have it handy, I'm sorry. I should have pulled.
It's more than that.
But we also built in some considerations for student films as well.
Yeah, we did. So I, I have no problem with what they're proposing.
I don't either.
Three fifty for the first day and a hundred for each long range day. They, they may just need to know that they have to contact Phillips Town.
I don't know that Phillips Town has an audiovisual shooting permanent.
I mean, just, just to sort of let them know that they will be there, I guess.
So Phillips Town, so I make a motion to approve their request at the price they've established?
They said three fifty for the first day and a hundred for subsequent days. Following days, yeah?
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, discussion of dam scammer, build-out proposal.
I have some, I have something else for you. It's got a word stuff. Wait, that's what you sent us, I think it was. You printed the whole, actually, no, this is, this is some different stuff. It's not the first sheet, it's insane. There's also a resolution that Beacon. No. Sorry. I'll give you one, I'll give you one afterwards. I want one to hold in my hand. Thank you. Um, yeah, so there's also a letter for elected officials to sign and send to Cuomo if you wanna join in on that. And there's also, besides, I, I don't know how many of you looked at the email I sent out. I wasn't necessarily expecting you to, I just wanted to have you have digital documents of some of this stuff. So I'm just gonna try and stick kind of to like what I wrote, but I, I could go on and talk about all of this stuff so you can ask more questions about it.
We could have just, just a brief history of the, the dam scammer, because it was in, in production and then was out of, and now they wanna start it up again.
So basically, it is in, it is operating right now. It was, it flooded in two thousand and, well, it flooded when Hurricane Sandy came through. Forget the year, two thousand two, something like that, twelve. When it flooded, it was considered ruined and inoperable. And then in two thousand fourteen, there was a change, we got lumped in with New York City in a capacity zone. And that means that if you build a power plant here in the Hudson Valley, you get rewarded because you're increasing the, the capacity to deliver energy at peak times to New York City and everywhere else. So then it became economical for them to put it back up running as it was. And they get thirty million dollars in capacity payments. And we, even though they only run five percent of the time, and that, that goes all on our, our bills, our electric bills, basically, the part that has to do with central Hudson maintaining the grid, part of that is capacity payments. So that's what made it economical for them to run it, because their profit levels are only like ten to twenty million. And thirty million they get from this capacity payment they were paying them. They want to take one of their buildings and build a modernized gas-fired plant. And that would not be running five percent of the time, it would be running about ninety to a hundred percent of the time. They're pushing the idea like, oh, it would be a new plant, so it would be more efficient, like forty percent more efficient. But a forty percent more efficient plant that runs an extra eighty-five percent of the time has like a ninefold increase in how much emissions you get, both in terms of the kind of small particulate and nitrous oxide emissions that cause increased asthma and COPD issues, premature births, heart disease. Like it has huge health impacts. And then it also has enormous impacts as far as global warming-related gases. They wanna put it in the same place that they had this plant that flooded out during Hurricane Sandy. It's pretty much guaranteed over the life of the plant for, the plant should be operational for forty or fifty years. They have in their plans the capacity to store up to a million gallons of diesel and up to thirty thousand gallons of aqueous ammonia on the site. And I, they have, they talk about putting it up on a berm, but that's not actually in any of the plans that are in writing that they've submitted, so. And plus, I'm not sure how well a berm does if you have a couple days of the Hudson River flooding, especially if it's full of like ice chunks or logs or, you know, whatever else that's washing back and forth that's right on the Hudson River. So I think the capacity for a, a flooding event that causes a tremendous amount of water pollution all at once is extremely high.
And the, the location is, it's in the town of Newburgh?
It's in the, it's in the village, yeah, like the, the town of Newburgh, not in the city of Newburgh. It's just north of the city of Newburgh.
Are they located in a FEMA designated flood zone?
I don't know. I can find out.
I think that would be.
So actually, Food Water Watch has been, I've been talking to them a bunch, and Santos is from Food Water Watch. And if you know any, do you know that?
I, I believe it is a flood zone, I, I can double check to you to make sure.
So I can definitely.
It's right on the river, I've canoe'd by it many times.
It's according to kind of sea, current sea level rise mapper, it's expected to.
I would think one of the key points is that it is, is or is not in the FEMA flood zone. And which zone it's in, I mean, FEMA has identified AJK blah, 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 blah.
I think that their plan is that they're gonna put it on a, they say they're gonna put it on a nine-foot berm.
Okay.
So they're just gonna raise it up on an earthen berm.
Right, which I think is one of the things that FEMA recommends to combat flood hazards.
Okay. So it will be also a source of global warming gases for the next forty to fifty years, as long as it's running, not only from the fossil fuels that are burned at the plant, but also because it's all frack gas that's being burned. And right now, there's not effective methane capture happening at the gas wellheads. So there's a tremendous amount of methane that gets released, which is about thirty times as potent as CO2, and there will be a lot of CO2 released. And I think that the most important part of that question, and one that I like really dove into before deciding where I stood on that, is that we really actually do not need to build any more fossil fuel infrastructure in New York State in order to meet our energy capacity. Like we, we can actually make the choices and not at a financial disadvantage to us. There's nine hundred megawatts of power that they're trying to install on offshore wind off of Long Island. There's a, what's called the, there's a transmission line that they're putting in the Champlain. I forget what it's called, but it's a transmission line that would run from Montreal to Astoria and bring down hydropower from there. And then also, there's a lot of gains to be made as far as increased energy efficiency and also small-scale and larger-scale solar projects and wind, wind projects and battery storage capacity.
Would you talked about the wind farms up in Long Island, which people are talking about and fighting about. There's some way we're fighting about this, so isn't it, there's nothing definite that that's ever gonna happen? The Champlain Hudson Power.
Mm-hmm, it's also being fought out.
It's also being, so there's nothing definite that that's ever gonna happen. These small-scale solar energy plants are not gonna make up for what we're, what we may need.
Well, there, there is actually CPV that's already running and the other one that's already running. Like that is projected to meet our power needs in the next short-term future.
But for how long? I mean, we're talking about this coming, what's coming out of Canada, first of all, means what? They're gonna have, what are they gonna have to do to create what we think is gonna come out of there, if it ever comes out of there? These are, these are, these are as much being talked about as, as what we're doing. I mean, there's nothing definite, you can't say, well, we don't need this because we have this and this. We don't have this and this.
Actually, we do have this and this in terms of the, I mean, I know that there's people working very hard on shutting them down, but because the CPV and the Cricket Valley Power Plant have already been built, we do have the capacity to make up for nearly all of what's being lost at Indian Point. And on top of that, I would argue that, yes, this is a, this is a turning point where we have to start doing something different than what we have been doing. And it's actually to everybody in the community's advantage, not only in terms of like air pollution and water pollution on an immediate sense, as well as contributing to global warming, but also because Dance Camera has like a fantastic website. They are very, they have a great PR department. They have that because it's, power plants are, are things that you put a big investment into and then you get a big amount of money out. And in the long term, you only hire about twenty-five people after the construction. All of these other projects involve a lot more jobs in the community and they're a lot more spread out in different places. So you end up with a lot more money coming into and staying into the community in terms of jobs. It's not that it actually costs that much more money, but you're right, that it is a, like, it is an ongoing fight as far as like, is it going to be offshore power cited on Long Island? And I would have to look at, I feel like some of those have been approved already, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, I did some fast research today and it doesn't seem that they are. It seems they're still finding it, but I haven't had time to do the kind of research I would need to do before I make any kind of decision, so.
Does anybody else have any questions? And also Santos, do you have any answers to that question?
Yeah, I mean, the narrative with a lot of these fossil fuel infrastructure projects at large is the state is going to oppose them harder and harder as we go. And Governor Cuomo has already, at least at a very basic level to the public, told, told us we're not gonna approve of major power plants and major pipeline projects. That's yet to make it into something in the legislature as it builds. There's a lot floating around. But this is a Wall Street private equity firm that is going to make a lot of money. There are only gonna be like thirty employees at this place after construction and it's going to pollute the air. So you're putting in public health and the environment at risk if Dance Camera goes through.
The estimated cost for this project there is five hundred million dollars, is that what it is or something? Is that what I was reading?
I don't know that.
It, it is a massive amount of money that's gonna be spent on something that is not particularly popular or necessary, in my opinion anyway. But, you know, this is a, it's a banquet for these bankers or these equity companies. They're putting nothing out there. They're getting all this money from our tax money and they're building something that they own now and we just keep paying for it the whole way along. It, it doesn't serve us to continue in this direction, in my opinion. Completely against it and my vote is that we sign this or at least make our own version of this.
I agree. I think the potential environmental impacts are devastating, both in the short term and the long term. And if we're gonna be, if we're considering joining into being a climate smart commi- community fifteen minutes ago, how can we support this?
Well, it's very little for us to do as well. But we just stand behind this agreement that this isn't the location for it. They're gonna build, why do they have to build it right in the Hudson River? They built it, they're one in Middletown, they built this not even being used massive project that they did right in Slade Hill, New York there. It's just sitting there.
They get the capacity payments.
They get, exactly. That's the money you're talking about. They built it with someone else's money and it's just sitting there. It's about two miles from my father-in-law's house, I drive by it every time I go there.
Is that the one that's on the north side of eighty-four?
Yes.
And you see these huge transmission lines coming in.
They're not, it's just sitting there. It didn't even run for a week yet. And it's been built for over about three years now. So it's a, you know, this is just about making, them making money. And I, I really think it's a.
You mentioned that it uses fracked gas.
Better news could be made with that one.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Where is the fracked gas mined?
I think currently, it would probably mostly be coming from Pennsylvania.
That's what I was thinking. So the methane risk is there, not here?
Well, the, the, most of the risk of, there's, I mean, there's different parts of the methane risk. Like, yes, we would be contributing to groundwater poisoning in Pennsylvania.
Yeah, it's Pennsylvania.
But it's. But, but the, like, I could talk for a really long time on why global warming, why it makes sense for us to step up to the table and do something proactive about global warming. There's, in Thailand of all places, they're putting together an electric bus fleet to serve their cities. China has like the largest expansion of their solar program in the world. India has tree planting programs like crazy. Morocco is putting in solar projects to the point where they can actually meet their Paris Accord agreements where almost nowhere else does. There's a whole bunch of, there's cities in Texas that are, that have gone over to a hundred percent renewable generation. It's, it's something that if we wait for a global decision to be made, we will all suffer so terribly for that. And it makes sense to, to go ahead and make the right decisions as far as climate change locally, wherever you can. And this is the wrong decision and I also really would love you to, if you are curious about the potential of meeting the, the needs energy-wise, the study that was commissioned, it's referenced in the documents I sent out, it's called the, what's that study called? I don't know, it's back here somewhere.
The New York Independent System Operators.
Yeah.
Study looking at what it would take to close down Indian Point, replace that energy. And from that study in two thousand seventeen and the revised version in two thousand eighteen, we're showing that we could very easily meet with the current investments we have in energy efficiency, the energy replacement needs for Indian Point.
And are they countering that with their own studies or are there any other studies?
There, I mean, Dance Camera to this point has not addressed that. There, it is very early in application phase, like maybe that's something that comes out when they drop their full application, which is expected in mid-June, but it has not been addressed.
And the, the, following up on Marie's question on the gas, is the, is there infrastructure already in that area for gas?
Yes.
There is?
There is.
And, and you mentioned that it was gonna be all fracked gas or no, or is it a?
There is pretty much no source of gas right now that's not fracked gas.
No, but I mean, for this, for this, for this plan.
Yeah, any gas, any gas-operated plant is operating on fracked gas, that's what we have.
I mean, as you said, they have thousands and thousands of gallons of diesel there, so.
Oh, they, yeah, no, you're right. They have the capacity to operate on and like permission written in, and in their current plant too, permission written in to operate on diesel for up to thirty days a year. So that's, that's a lot of diesel.
Well, the gas infrastructure in Middletown and Orange County area is extremely developed. It's been in existence for, well, since I was a kid, that we've had gas. What was the name, Orange and Rockland had a, had a massive investment on that. So there's a ton of natural gas on that side of the river and housing. So there's a ton of natural gas on that side of the river and houses and places where you wouldn't think that gas would be run. People are on natural gas, whereas over here, it's a lot of propane. You know, we don't really have it so much. Little Putnam County.
The, one of the resolutions that you have, one was from Beacon, I don't know, did they pass that, or are they working on that?
I think they're still working on it.
And New Paltz?
New Paltz was passed.
Okay. And so what about the communities that are directly surrounding the area, like Newburgh or I guess it would be Marlborough?
I think the city-
City of Newburgh has passed a resolution. It's very likely the city of Beacon will too.
And the other surrounding neighbors, do you know what their feeling is towards this?
So, New Paltz is definitely against this. Lloyd has come out against all fossil fuels infrastructure in general, but points out climate change more than the local impacts. The town of Newburgh, I think gets a lot of tax review from this, so they would be the only ones to support it. I, you know, it's still very early, so I think a lot of people are still determining what they're gonna do on this application.
So actually, what's, so the stage that they're in now, what, where is that, or what's happening right now?
If you're familiar, and this is an issue with renewable infrastructure as well. It's going through the Public Service Commission's Article 10 process. Right now, where the plant currently is, is in the pre-application stage. And the main stakeholders for this are like the city and town of Newburgh and the city of Beacon. Newburgh and Beacon themselves are environmental justice communities. There's a high population of communities, a color of lower income, especially in the city of Newburgh. And there's also a, like, I think, a prison facility, a correctional facility, pretty close to the site as well. It's a big environmental justice community there, and probably those towns are gonna weigh those in, in the resolution. Cold Spring, it doesn't make as much sense here. Be more of a climate change resolution. But I do wanna address to the point you made earlier. There are issues with what's gonna happen with renewable energy infrastructure, but to the point on energy efficiency and battery storage, at least for the Hudson Valley area of replacement energy, there's already been $250 million in Westchester County that's added towards increasing battery storage and increasing energy efficiency. And it's only gonna increase more in these areas as Con Ed and National Grid put in more gas moratoriums in place. So even regardless of what happens at a town and municipal level locally, the state is going to get more aggressive on energy efficiency money that's being put in locally over the next few years, and it's already immediately started with Westchester County.
Who's, who's taking the lead on the secret?
I don't know.
I'm assuming that you don't have to do a secret.
It goes through a difference, so that's normally, the EIS secret process is separate from the Article 10. I'm not as familiar with that process, but we could find out.
I feel like Sinek Hudson might have said something about it.
Sinek Hudson would be the people to talk to, but-
I'm sorry?
I said Sinek Hudson would be the people to talk to, but-
But also, I'll get your answer.
Michelle, has there been any, any talk of this in?
Yeah, so we have spoken a lot, just so that you guys know, with Hudson's land trust. So our missionary doesn't quite extend that far. However, we would, I mean, I very much appreciate what you said, and we would oppose the plan on those grounds as well. Sinek Hudson has been extremely involved in this issue. They're concerned about many of the issues that you've mentioned. And so, yeah, I mean, we, the land trust hasn't taken an official position because it is outside of our missionary, but, you know, personally, what we've discussed, and in line with the commitment to move to renewable energy, we do think, you know, I'll speak for myself, I think this is a, is a bad, is not, is not a good energy project for the area.
And Cuomo banned fracking in New York, right? Is that right?
Yeah, I saw that.
So it's kind of like, oh, it's all right, we'll do somewhere else.
The gas, the gas that's coming, the fracked gas from Pennsylvania is right on the other side of Delaware River, basically, which is a half-hour drive or not even to Middletown, New York, which is where that gas plant that was recently built is. And the pipeline goes right along Route 84 or somewhere in the vicinity, and, yeah.
I'd like to, I know, I'd like to, like, another, a week to, like, to do some work. I don't wanna do a resolution or anything. I think there's some questions, but-
No, I understand. So like, it's a first step.
Yeah, and I appreciate your time, and I-
I'll try and find the answer about the flood zone, the flood zone it's in right now, and who's the, who's doing the secret.
But that's not a flood zone.
It's in some flood zone, but your point to like which, which zone of the flood zone, and, yeah.
To give you a sense of this, I don't know if the format is, I'll just interject or not, but to give you a sense of the organizations that are fighting this currently, on like the legal docket, it's Food and Water Watch, Riverkeeper, Sinek Hudson, Sierra Club, Orange Residents Against Pelican Pipelines. It's very little grassroots to the biggest of the Greens and the lawyers. And on the other side of it is Wall Street executives of Tiger Infrastructures and big equity private investors.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, no, let me know if I can come back and answer any other questions while you're really stuck.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, it's got fighting on.
Okay, so 11 letter from Putnam County, is the false alarm penalty?
I'm sorry, Dave, so you're not-
I think we can put it, we'll put it on the next agenda.
It, that was a month later than you were doing that. It's already, it starts at 6:30 with-
Oh, okay, all right. Put it on the following one, which is then a week off and that's what it can be.
Two weeks. Three weeks.
Okay, where are we?
So we're at number 12.
Okay.
11.
Yeah, from the county. Anyone read this thing?
Yes, I did. I sent an email to everyone.
Yeah, we don't need to-
Our village code already addresses false alarm penalties. So I'm not sure that we need to do anything. The difference here is that their fourth time is $200, our third and fourth time is $100 each. I mean, subsubsequent time is $100. I asked Jeff to pull together the number of false alarms that occurred in 2018. He didn't get me anything back on that yet. The fire inspector is supposed to keep a record of, of what false alarms, so it should be obtained. Bottom line, I don't think we have to do anything.
Okay, I agree. I'm not doing anything. Where am I?
Do you want a response to go to Mr. Paul? Of course.
All right, so Marie's gonna follow up with a letter to the, to Mr. Who?
Paul.
Mr. Paul.
Johnson?
Yeah? Okay, next is a recommendation for repaired planter boxes. I'm gonna table this also because there are, well, the planter box is that clear or no?
We don't, like-
We've got these estimates that are not, not that clear.
One person quoted on planter boxes and Fadella, Fadella didn't- Fadella didn't quote on planter boxes, he just quoted on basins. And the last one else, he'd go up and quote on the planter box, so that, if you wanna just do the planter box. I didn't see Fadella quote on that at all.
I don't see Fadella fitting on that.
No, I just see the other two. One's 3,000, one's 3,500. But then the catch patient quotes are like really weird.
I think we need three, is it the three bids we need, or under 3,000? 3,000 or under for procurement that we need to approve? I think we brought it to 3,000. All right, let's table this enough there, it's not the end of the world, I don't think.
Note that-
You're not gonna get to it this week.
Yeah, note that the, you know, planter box, one is saying eight inches and the other is saying six inches. He's saying, four new, eight-inch wool, and this is starting with six-inch wool, the other one.
Yeah, we need to get definite something, so, well, voting the same thing.
All right, do you wanna talk to the board on this, or not? Everyone, I'll talk.
Yeah, cause I won't be around tomorrow. I think they wanna get it done before the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be hard to do. One's, one's a, an insurance claim.
Yeah, that one's easy.
A planter box. The other ones we wanna get done. All right, so we're tabling that also, Michael.
Got it. Thank you.
Both 12 and 13, until we clear up what's what on that. Which brings us to approval of bills, which is the simplest thing tonight.
I move to approve batch number 5091 for a total amount of $46,545.92.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Lastly, approval of trustee's workshop meeting 4/23/19. I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else from the board?
Yeah, I have some information about the CCA that we're doing here in our, in our area. We have signed with a company for our insur, uh, not insurance, for our electrical energy. It's called Direct Energy is the name of the company, and they were, they were chosen, they have the, they were tied with other companies for the price of the kilowatt hour, but they're, they're supplying, it's 100% renewable energy supply. The price is 6.3 cents per kilowatt hour, which is actually better than they had thought that they would get. It's a two-year contract, beginning in July, and of the renewable energy, 15% of it is supplied by hydro from New York State itself. And the rea, the main reason we're really signing with this company is, they signed with this company is, they, they give us, they took all of our, all of our proposals in our, what we wanted in terms of the ability to pursue renewable energy wherever it was possible. So this company, Direct Energy, will allow us to do that. So if new opportunities start to come up in New York State in that two-year period, we can switch over to those sources, so.
Steve, how does that rate compare with Central Hudson's rate?
It's below.
It's below, but I, I couldn't tell you exactly.
I read it, it's below, not a lot, but it's below.
If it's starting in July, when are the, when are the residents gonna be notified that the bill's gonna be different?
That's next.
And when are the residents gonna be notified that they can opt out of this?
Well, the, there's an opt-out letter going out, which is forthcoming. We actually received it in an email today. I saw it right before I came to the meeting, which we'll have to. I don't know if they're, I mean, we have to promote it also on our website and everything, but I think they actually do the mailing for us, Fuel Assets, but I'm not sure. It goes out to every person, and they have a, they have the opportunity to fill out this form and mail it back in, which will opt them out of the program if they're not interested in saving money or changing their current supplier. And the, what else here?
I didn't get that email.
Sorry, I can't read my own writing. There it is. And there's gonna be two upcoming events that they're putting on. One at Village Hall on Thursday, May 9th, this Thursday, from 11:30 to 12:30 for people who wanna learn more about it. And later that same day, from 6:00 to 7:00 at the Desmond Fish Library in Garrison, they'll also be having an informational event.
That information I got, but those emails only go to people who have signed up to give their emails, which is probably less than half of the village, you know? So there's a whole bunch of people that need to be notified what's going on.
Right.
And, you know, the guys always hear Thursdays from 11:30 to 12:30 or whatever, and very rarely does anybody bother to come in, because even though we put signs and it's in, you know, emails, you know, people don't know, so there needs to be more reach out to the people who this is really gonna affect.
You mean beyond the opt-out letter and the letter term?
Well, hopefully, the opt-out letter is going to be very clear as to what they're opting out of and what they're getting stuck in if they don't opt out. Because I thought there was supposed to be all kinds of community meetings and-
Well, they were offered, but they can't force people to go.
Yeah, but-
But you have to tell people.
Somebody sitting here for an hour on a Thursday, when you're putting a sign in the window or you're sending a bunch of people emails, is not my idea of notifying people.
I, I thought there was a requirement to send them a letter.
I'd have had an opt-out.
Hard copy letter.
There will be, that's forthcoming also, but we actually have this information now, and we can start putting it out as a village as well, beyond what they're gonna do.
Like, I think what I'm hearing, and I would agree with, is that their outreach is limited at best. I mean, to have, it's like us saying we're gonna have a meeting and putting a sticker on the door. It's like, who's gonna see it?
That's not, right. They, they have a list of all the central-
Well, it was in periodicals as well, right? It was in papers.
They have a list-
I didn't see it, I don't know.
They have a list of all the Central Hudson customers. That was one of the first things they were, they were pointing to.
Yeah, they had it, right.
So it seems to me that that's the list, that a letter has to be sent to each person or address on that list.
Well, there will be a letter now, but there should have been one.
There should have been a meeting way before this.
There should have been like a meeting or advising of a meeting, maybe could, I think the information could have got out early, definitely. There is a letter that's going out, which Steve referred to, which I have right here with little hands, which explains everything really quite clearly. But if you're coming in from nowhere and have no idea what you're talking about, I'm not sure how this is gonna resonate. As far as the cost goes, Central Hudson's supply rate is .0687, and the total renewable that we're getting is .0638. There's also an option where you can have a fixed rate for a standard, which is not totally renewable, and that's .0608. So that's, that's the lowest you can go. And there's options that tell you everything in here. I'm pleased to announce the launch, blah, blah, blah. While Central Hudson will continue to deliver electricity, provide, provide repair services and handle billing, the utility will no longer be the default supplier of electricity for our community. After competitive procurement process, we have selected Direct Energy as our community's default supplier. As of July 1st, 2019, the default energy supplying Cold Spring will now be 100% renewable, sourced from New York State Clean Energy Facility. To learn more, there's a number here and a website. Price stability programs participating will pay a fixed rate for electricity. Fixed rates will take effect July 1st. It will not increase for a period of 24 months. Participation. All eligible residents and small commercial electricity customers will be automatically enrolled. You do not need to take any action to enroll. Should you not wish to participate, you may opt out of the program by June 13th. Those who opt out will continue to receive electricity supply from Central Hudson. After program launch, customers may cancel service at any time without incurring cancellation fee or penalty. Standard option, if you wish, this is the one I was talking, it's not renewable, but not Central Hudson. If you wish to participate in this program but don't want 100% renewable, by default, you may still enroll on a fixed rate by choosing standard supply. The phone number and also a website for that.
And how did you get that?
He just sent it like 4:30 today.
It was sent us an email?
By you, yes.
I didn't get it.
So I'll forward it to you.
Is there, is there any, um-
Here, how to opt out is the second page. If you do not wish to participate in the program, you may opt out via mail, phone, online, or as follows. Opt out by mail. Fill out the prepaid opt-out card and return to the enclosed envelope. Opt out by phone, there's a phone number. Opt out online. Additional opportunity, local renewables, participating Hudson Valley Community Power also provides you the opportunity to support a specific renewable energy project through New York State Community Distributed Generation Program. Through your participate, participation, you can receive additional savings on your electricity bill, which directly support local renewable energy. Learn more. Still have questions? Contact us.
No, no more. But you know, you sit, you sit in this office, and you can probably see it. There will be a stream of senior citizens coming in who don't quite understand what's going on, who wanna know what's going on, and-
I could also say, we've done, and I've been involved in like trying to get outreach to people for 20 years now, and you can do 100 different things, and probably the same amount of people will come.
We didn't send anybody away. We didn't have the meeting that- We didn't have the meeting that supposedly I thought we were gonna have way before it's time to say, you know, you've got a month left out of this. I, I had understood, and maybe I understood incorrectly, but there was gonna be a meeting a long time ago explaining to people what we were working on.
I think they considered those Thursday meetings.
They considered somebody sitting in here when nobody really knew about it, or a few people knew about it, that that was, that covered their butts. And my, my thinking, I don't think it did.
Well, that's kind of water, the water night. Water theme night, over, under the bridge.
Under the bridge.
So we're gonna have to deal with it now. Right? I guess. I mean, we're not gonna stop, we're, we're...
No, I mean, we, we agree to it, but we agree to it, you know, maybe it was...
I think we can reach out to Joel or say, can we, I don't know.
Well, I'm, it's just a message, but of course, it's a bunker in here and there it goes. Message this one out, I just wanted to find out when that, that letter's going to the customers.
Well, it's being signed by me, so it's not going out yet.
I mean, the opt-out letter.
The opt-out letter is...
It's going out next Monday.
The opt-out letter is signed by me. It's part of a package.
I know, no, but he, the letter that you just read is going to every Central Hudson...
Right. And that's, that's gonna be included with this, I think. It's on our letterhead, so that plus the opt-outs going, and I didn't sign that, so I don't think it's going out right away.
Who's, who's paying for the mailings?
They are, yeah.
And who's producing it?
We are, he just sent it pre-made out to the village for our, for our ease of filling it out.
The answer we should, we should have is they are going to send it out.
They are, but we have to send back this...
They are going to reproduce and send it out and you don't have to worry about it.
They've got, they've got all the names and addresses, so.
Anything from our dedicated audience? Hi, Michelle.
Continuing on the theme of water, uh, I just wanted to say that, and Steve has been on the loop on this, but we, uh, have our second round of funding from the DEC grant that we got last year. And, uh, we will be doing, uh, we've hired a firm called Watershed Assessment Associates to actually do testing in Foundry Brook, so they'll do it from public access points. The testing will be macro invertebrates. So this has been done before, there was a study called Stream Walk, like, uh, in 2004, so it hasn't actually been done since, except there is one point on Foundry Brook that the DEC tests regularly for macro invertebrates and it's just below 9D. So we have the ability to pick two other points on Foundry Brook, which I think ideally you wanna do them above the water intake on Fisker Road. And that will, uh, that will involve a couple of volunteers from the village, so Steve is gonna come out with us. This will be on July 9th. And we'll, uh, collect samples from Foundry Brook and those will be tested for macro invertebrates and there'll also be some chemical tests on it. And we'll get the results towards the end of the year or early next year. And that will establish a baseline that, A, we can compare to the DE, DEC testing that's been done before already at that point below 9D. But also when we have going forward a baseline to test against in future years, we can also test against the data that was collected, well, admittedly it was 15 years ago, the points above the water intake. And I would love, if you, if anybody on the board has any suggestions for where those testing points could, should be, we're gonna do the same in Clove Creek for Phillips Town. We're gonna actually select four points along Clove Creek to do the sampling. And I went to the town board meeting last week and the town board had a lot of suggestions on where those points should be based on what the activity in the water, some of the land around the, the streams is actually going on. Wouldn't it be nice to test something before that activity and then after that activity so that we can see what the impact on the stream is? And the reason for testing the macro invertebrates, um, is just because they're such a good indicator of the health of the stream, so that, so that's why we'll be doing that. So I just wanted, I just wanted the, um, village board to be aware that that's, that's the plan to, to take place on July 9th.
Great.
Since it is our water supply.
Would this be affected by the removal or of the beavers at the Beaver Dam there?
I mean, if you have that as a suggestion, like before or after Beaver, you know, we could...
That would be interesting, I don't know. I know it's, it's not happening all at once, that they're doing it in stages, but, um...
Yeah.
It, I don't know, it might have some...
But if you do, if you do have any suggestions on where, where the points should be, then we've got two other points to pick, so we've only got budget for three points in Foundry Brook. But, and one of them's already predetermined because of the DNC is already testing. So that'll be interesting because we can see how it tracks over time. But in, as concerns the water supply, if you have concerns about what is going on on the length of Foundry Brook, it's only a two mile stream, something like that. You know, if you have ideas, I mean, there are some parts where the road crosses a stream or a stream goes underneath that look very concerning. So any input that you have, any areas that you might, you might have input, see on, you know, what, uh, what are, what should those other two points be?
I'll talk to Greg.
Yeah.
He knows everything.
I think Greg might be a good source.
Yeah. So I just wanted you to be aware.
Somewhere we won't fall down in a bank.
Or you can reach over.
Yeah, I guess.
Yes? My name's Alan Speedall, I live right on the other side of that wall there and I'd like to voice my support both for the climate smart communities and for the resolution against Dan Scammer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming in.
Thank you.